Two thousand fourteen dash eighteen. We're just back from lunch and now we have our open work session with the Board of Education. Welcome. Good. Whoever you want to bring.
Pick some beer. Oh, Mrs. Handy, come on out. I saw you closing your eyes. It's a little like these children, don't pick me, don't pick me.
Thank you for the opportunity to get together today.
If you would just introduce everybody for the TV.
I'm Dr. John Frederickson, Superintendent Schools.
Brian Foray, Director Facility Services.
And Ron Willie, President of the Board of Education.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for opportunity to visit. I'm aware of one question and I also have a list of topics that I might be interested in talking a little bit about. What's your pleasure?
Why don't you go with the one question and then we'll see if any other kind of pop up.
Great, thank you. The question was, how are we doing on the water and the like out at Beaver Run Elementary School? And we've got a team that's working very diligently on that and effectively, I think. In fact, we're collaborating a lot with Wycomico County and city staff as well as State Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, I think it is. Maybe Brian can bring us up to speed in terms of what the technical details that we're doing on that.
Great.
Good afternoon. I'm not really sure what the question was related to, so if it's in regard to the work we're doing with getting public water and sewer in the site, we're still working with Lee and the county Public Works and the City of Salisbury.
Pull the mic a little bit, yeah, thank you.
The City of Salisbury. We have successfully obtained the pre-annexation agreement from the city. So, you know, that's one of the items checked off and we have been making good progress with the Business Association of Beaver Run in terms of obtaining the easements. Over this last few weeks, we've been meeting with some of the owners over there and the association and I think we've got their support now. So those hurdles are done. We'll finalize the engineering since now we know where all the easements are going to be and we'll coordinate with Lee to see what the next steps are going to be with regard to the actual construction timeline and bidding the project.
Who is it that has to obtain the easements? Is it the Board of Ed, the county, the city?
It'll be the county, I believe, that will actually have the easements and I think Lee has been also working on the actual documents for that.
Okay, okay.
We've just been dogging it because it's important to us.
Sure. Yeah, I've heard quite a few concerns from teachers and students at Beaver Run about some of the issues they've had, so.
We had a design originally and we ran into some difficulties with some of the property owners there who were, I'd say, less than motivated to work with us on some easements, so we had to go back to the drawing board. And I think we've got something now that everybody can work with. And I think the association now understands that in the long run, this may be a benefit to them as well in terms of their property values and the available areas and things of that nature. So I think, you know, that information is out and people understand now, so.
Brian, it is important, I think, to note in the council probably is had phone calls or questions that at no time during this failure of the pump was there any concern about safe drinking water, health conditions within the school? Obviously, something had to be done or that concern would have risen, but I don't believe there was, at least from what the Board understands, there was never a point of concern about the health of students or teachers or staff there.
Right, the main concern I heard was about the availability of the restroom facilities and how the lines were backing up from the kids. Did you guys have to address anything with that as far as more porta potters or anything?
We put some out there.
Okay.
What happened on the, I believe it was on the twenty-fifth around two o'clock, we lost service at the school and we're on well service. So we were down. We put some porta potties, which is a normal response when we lose water and school's still in session, and we had bottled water there as well. Going into the next day, we haven't discovered the root cause of the problem, but during the course of the day, we did discover it was related to some pressure issues with one of the four bladder tanks. And we resolved the problem and since that point, we haven't had any further downtime or anything on the pump or the well. This summer, we did an extensive amount of work at Beaver Run and one of the things we did do was our well inspection program to see what needed to be, what work needs to be done on that well, how many more years we have in that well and trying to understand what we have there in concert with the timeline for getting the public services there. What we don't want to do is have to go put a new well in and spend the money on that and then six months we'll be tying in the water and sewer. So we're just trying to play all that out, so. But we're in good shape now, I think, with the service, so.
Right.
Brian, what is your timeline?
Hopefully, we would be under construction and have that in place with probably about a year from now. I have to coordinate with Lee and I have not been through this with the city in terms of the actual process, but, you know, Amanda's been very helpful from the City of Salisbury as well as their director and Lee's been very cooperative too. So I'm sure they understand the immediacy of our situation and will work with us as soon, as fast as they can.
Where are they going to cross fifty at?
Oh, yeah, they have, it's already designed and laid out and they already have an arrangement with the, for the crossing. So I can't tell you exactly where it is, I don't have a drawing, but it is on, it is already designed.
Now, the folks on the road on Beaver Run, the industrial park or the park, I guess you call it.
Beaver Run Park, yep.
Are they going to mandate or have to hook up to water sewer or do they have the option not to?
I don't know that it's mandatory.
Are they pretty, you said they were pretty happy with that?
Some of the, some of them have indicated, they understand that there's going to be services there. Some of them have questions with regard to what does that mean in the future. Exactly, exactly. We don't have all the answers to that, but they will have services available should they be, or choose to petition for annexation, I think, in that area, so.
I think you can be very proud of the way that you've kept the public and the students apprised of what's going on out there because it doesn't seem to be a whole furor of public outcry. I think the public seems to understand what the situation is and I think that's very admirable that you've done such a good job of damage control.
Well, we've got a, we've got a good team that's working on it and they're confident about the team that's doing the actual plumbing work, but also, you know, we've expanded our communications tools with a new software system for, you know, phone calls and emails and text messaging and we use that immediately on the day it occurred as well as regularly thereafter. And people seem to understand, you know, what's going on.
Great. Any other questions on this specific project? Okay.
Just to note, since we're on that side of town, if you have an opportunity to visit Pittsfield, what has been done at Pittsfield with the total air conditioning and the renovations of the building and in projects still not complete, they're still working on another building, but it is absolutely been, the people there are thrilled to death to visit with them, but what they've been able to do with technology, with security, and that's not complete either. There's still another wall to be built at the entranceway. But I was so impressed with Pittsfield and what has happened on that side of the county with that school and when they finish this final phase, this last building, it will be, I think, something the community as a whole can be proud of for years to come.
Great.
You know, we had fifty workers out there working seven days a week.
Yes.
During the summer and they really busted their humps. On the outside, you just notice that the windows have a little bit of a, kind of a greenish, turquoiseish cast to them. But, and you go through the inside, most of the rooms look like a brand-new room. I mean, we did insulation, did air conditioning, did technology, cabinet work and stuff like that and it really, really turned out well, although we still have the same, I think it's greenish terrazzo floors in the hallways and that. And they, they look beautiful.
Sure.
You know, I mean, they, you know, that stuff, you know, lasts forever, it's like.
It's come back in style.
Yeah. So we're really pleased and I think a big pat on the back goes to Brian and to Bruce Ford and the other people because it's one more of those projects that, we didn't have the money to just do it and so they got a little bit of money from Peter, they got a little bit of money from Paul, they got a little bit of money from Mary and everybody else down the line to get the project done. So now, next summer, when Bennett Middle School comes online, we'll be down to two buildings, West Salisbury and East Salisbury, were the only buildings that don't have AC in them.
Great.
And we're getting some feedback from some folks that are still upset that we don't, you know, have air conditioning in all the buildings today, but we're making, I think, really good progress and so a pat on the back goes to Brian and company because they're the ones that did the heavy lifting on it. And I don't know if you, if you want me to talk a little bit about our Facilities Task Force at all?
Yeah, sure.
If you're up to it.
Yeah.
I've got a, you know, the Facilities Task Force report is eighty-plus pages and, but here's a three-page synopsis of what it looks like when it's just boiled down to the nubs. The, the team is really working very well in terms of making progress for this. Can I get enough of it?
I think so. Great.
Hold on, I've got more. I think a key piece to it is that we're going into planning mode for West Salisbury this winter, seeking funding from the state and from you for assistance in regards to this. And one of the key pieces to that is that we're looking at units and I think I've talked to you before, an elementary school, three hundred, three hundred and fifty kids has the same administrative unit overhead as does a six hundred to six hundred and fifty student school. In other words, you have a principal, vice principal, media specialist, head bookkeeper or head secretary of bookkeeper, building service manager and the like. So that's about six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars, it depends if an elementary or secondary building. Well, if I can reduce the number of units slightly, those dollars can go directly into the classroom. So we're looking at the possibilities of having West Salisbury being a larger school, school building site and reducing the number of elementary units that we operate. The same thing goes at the middle school level to try and, you know, optimize the dollars that go into the classroom. So as you look at this plan, you'll, when you, I mean, it's best to read it with a cup of coffee in your hand because there's a lot of little details and you've got to kind of refer back and forth. You've got a graphic and then you've also got it in text in front of you. This is just the boiled-down version, the actual full version is on the web and we'd be delighted if you take a peek at that. But the team really did a great job, they worked on it all year last year. And if you have a group that would like a speech or a presentation or any, just give me five minutes, I or one of my team members will be there and make a presentation. I've been going around to city council meetings around the county as well as any organizations that'd be interested in listening to me.
That's a nice segue, Dr. Frederickson, to knowing when would be the appropriate time to discuss West Salisbury? Because I know that the church that's right across the street, Wesley Temple, they've been a partner for years and they've been, you know, asking and inquiring about things that are going on, so what would be appropriate?
I'd be delighted if they called this afternoon and booked the meeting now.
Okay.
And we can do a number of different things. We can invite them to participate in some of our planning meetings or if they would like a presentation at the church or a coffee clutch or whatever works best, I would be absolutely delighted, we can meet at the school, whatever works best for them. And, you know, I've had presentations of this nature virtually any hour of the day.
Sure, yeah, I think I'm correct, they did have representatives on the Facilities Task Force, I believe, that were part of this, so they have some informational people, I think, that they can go to as well. Certainly, a presentation would be a welcome thing.
Okay.
And if they wanted more technical, then we'll line up Brian and one of his team members. If it's okay to be more general, then it'll be me or Dr. Townsend or Dr. Handy. We'd be delighted, the opportunity.
Thank you.
And, you know, if you say, well, I don't want to drive east, I want to drive south, well, we'd be delighted if you drive out there, take a look at Bennett Middle School. The, you know, the outside is, you know, pretty much there and the inside is going great guns. And if you've seen my kickoff speech stuff this fall, that was recorded out at, in the main hallway area of Bennett Middle School. And it's, it's going to be great. Now, this is not going to be the black, red and white coloration in the floors. This will be blue and white with, you know, the coloration in the floors, in the hallways, that ground concrete product. We've had really good luck and literally basically hit it with some water. I mean, the team, it's very efficient, very clean, very safe, it's good for employees and students alike and it looks nice. It really, really turned out nice. So we're excited about that. As we look at that, please note that Bennett Middle School and new building situation, we're going to be looking at attendance areas. Will there be large changes or small changes? Probably not large changes because we're not changing the overall capacity of the system. I mean, we've got a few more square feet, but we probably will be tweaking some lines. We're going through a major study on that this fall. If somebody has interest in attendance or attendance districts, some people call them. Be more than glad to have them sit down and talk with us, whether it's formally like at our meetings or if they just want some information.
Have you been hearing much from the public about that? Are there apprehension from the public?
I've had two contacts.
Okay.
And the main concern was they bought a house either next to or near the new site for Bennett Middle School and they wanted to know if they were going to be going in there. And I said, well, first off, I don't know specifically, but we, in the past, if you look at our general history, when we're looking at major, large buildings, we haven't changed the boundaries close to the building. It's been on the periphery, in other words, a road that's two or three miles away, it might switch over to a road that's maybe slightly closer or slightly further. But I'm not going to make any predictions. I mean, five years ago, we did a major study like this, spent a year at it. We came up with one triangle that had about ninety-five or ninety-three kids in it. Well, the federal government had made some decisions and the state government did some decisions and it turned out that eighty-six of the kids that were going to be affected got moved by some other means. So at the end of the day, we never changed that triangle. But there's not, there's no way to predict it today because we haven't done, finished the study. I mean, we're just, right now, we're just amassing the databases necessary to have that conversation and we'll call together the folks that, you know, met with us last time and add some more people to that and we'll go through the same study. Our goal is to have it done in January. That way, we can let people know with plenty of time to plan if there is a change for them.
Board has asked that, that any changes in district that will affect people attending that school, that not be released in April, but that as soon as we get that done, and John's indicated, they're still working on that, but the Board has said, we want to get that out there to folks as soon as the decisions have been made so that those that are affected won't hear about it in late spring, but hopefully by the beginning of spring, that will be available to folks who may be impacted by changes that are occurring. That's our desire.
Sure.
I mean, we have, we had one, I don't know if it would be called a major or minor change this year and that is we moved the third graders from Pittsfield Elementary Middle School to Willards Elementary School this year. And because the kids are already there for second grade, for those families, it was, other than their expectation of going to Pittsfield the next year, it wasn't a huge change and the lines didn't change other than the grade levels. That seemed to go pretty well. That's going to open up some capacity at the middle school level for us to try and make some other adjustments out of. We'll have a major rollout in a few years of why middle school as far as becoming some kind of a utilization that's different than possibly what it is right now. But again, that's, that's a few years out. You know, you make a long-range plan and then you tweak it as you go along and sometimes other things change like the federal government.
Sure.
A bigger change, not for the parents so much, but for the kids, is this year, we're finally acknowledging that kids have cell phones. We've.
You mentioned this.
It seems strange, I mean, we say, listen, if we don't see it, we're not going to deal with it. But we're going to try it and we're saying that in the cafeteria, you can use the cellphone and in the classroom, you can use the cellphone for educational purposes. And so this means the kids are charged with going and, say, if there's a query up on the board, blah, 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 what is the answer to this? They text that to a particular site and then the teacher can get this response table that comes back and says, ninety percent of the kids said this, ten percent said that, you know, most of the kids are learning this, we can maybe move on or fifty-fifty, you need to reteach. And there's a bunch of other things, that's just one small example.
So instead of laptops now, we're going to get them cell phones?
We're not getting them cell phones. If they don't have a cellphone to use, we either have them buddy up or some kind of a teamwork thing or we provide them with a laptop or other tool.
BYB D, bring your own device.
It starts.
And it's, it's interesting how the kids have been very good about it. I mean, it's reduced our discipline situations already with kids as far as cell phones because previously, the kids would be doing stuff in the hallway and they'd be texting and be, because, what's it, a fourteen-year-old, they can be sitting there with their hand in their pocket and text, we don't even know it. You know, and we, you know, we're sitting there trying to figure out, you know, did we get a Y or a T on that last key that we stroked? So that is a big change for our kids. And we're tightening up some other things with our cellphone and email, our whole technology policy, but this one is one that's really captured the imagination of the kids and I'm anxious to see how it shakes out. I mean, we're in the honeymoon park yet.
What grade levels?
Anybody in secondary. So it's middle school, sixth grade on up.
Okay.
How many kids would not have cell phones? Have you ever checked to see if there was, how many children?
Our secondary administrators, I think, are estimating somewhere between ten and twenty-five percent don't have some kind of a cellphone product on them. You know, it depends on the school and that's an estimate, we don't have a sign, we haven't done a survey, a scientific tool on that. So the vast majority of them have some kind of a tool. One of the, one of the problems, there are two problems that we're going to face on it. I think the discipline thing will be, will be workable, but the two bigger problems I see on it, number one is chargers. Okay, think about, we've got a thousand or fifteen hundred kids in a building and their batteries are failing at noon. So it's one thing to have a dozen outlets in the cafeteria for doing the scrubbing and things like that and plugging in a refrigerator or a cooler or a coffee maker. It's another thing to have five hundred kids sitting there having lunch and they want to plug their cellphone in. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure that one out. And then the second one is going to be a family problem. Right now, we're not allowing the kids to use our Wi-Fi system and we're locking that down pretty tight because we just don't have the capacity today. And eventually, we're going to have to have better capacity for testing, but also for these kids to jump on because if we have the Wi-Fi capacity, that's going to reduce their bills substantially. But I have an idea that over the next couple of weeks, when the first month cellphone bills come in, there's going to be some conversations around the dinner table that are going to. I'm not going to, I don't want to be there because I think, I think, you know, the kid might do a little bit of texting and I think the school activity is probably going to be five minutes, maybe ten minutes at most for most of the experiences. But some of the kids may use it a little bit more and this may become a little bit more costly. And so it'd be a little bit, we probably will getting, be getting some phone calls and we'll work through that. I anticipate by March or April, we'll have the testing system up the Wi-Fi window and at that point then, once the testing window is over, we can let the kids get on. But we're, I'm not going to make a commitment to that because as soon as if you say, they will have it on this date, something is going to happen and we have to deal with it. I'd rather be able to say, okay, everything's online, Tuesday next week or two weeks from now, you can start using the Wi-Fi system, here's the password. But it'll be interesting. It'll be, I'm not sure which problem is going to come up first, the first phone call about the kid using too much cellphone time or the first principal that starts sticking in twenty, ten outlet strips in their cafeteria, you know? It's going to, it's just, we just have to deal with it. But it's, it is the way the technology is going. You know, you go into a McDonald's or you go into other kind of a fast food place these days and you see, all of a sudden, you see outlets that you never saw before.
Well, you have that in new schools, yeah.
We don't have these strips like that yet, no. You know, but we do have.
Do you have them in classrooms?
Pardon?
Do you have them in the classrooms?
Power strips for, you know, like say thirty.
At the desk or?
No. Most of the time, what we're converting to now is a more of a laptop cart situation. Where you plug in a cart and it'll hold sixteen or twenty-four laptops, which all plug into a big transformer type of gadget and they can charge on that. But to have the kids, each of them, you know, one has a Verizon, one has a this and one has a that, it gets a little bit more exciting. They're going to be dragging around their chargers.
This change is uncharted waters for us, but it's been used very successfully in other places before the technology policy was complete. The Board was a part of, I want to say hours of discussion about this for fear that this would be misused instead of used properly. But we have teachers telling us that it is an absolute wonderful addition to the instructional capability within the classroom to be able to have your own research tool in your hand and be able to talk about a topic and go, each student, go online and be able to research information about that and bring their own thoughts and as John pointed out, even be able to respond as a group. So it's a whole new world for some of us who lived in the world in the past. But so far, and it's almost too soon to say, John said we're on the honeymoon, but, you know, the beginning use of it has not created discipline concerns. In fact, they've been less and teachers are reporting that it's being used very effectively for instruction, which is what our desire was. So it's early yet to write a final review, but, and I'm sure there are going to be bumps along the road, but, you know, we live in a world where that's the direction things are going and you either get on board or you fall behind.
I assume we're behind the curve here?
Actually, not. I think about, I don't think we have a third of the schools in the state authorize BYOD or bring your own cellphone. I think it's maybe four or five. And it's been a kind of a hot topic and so I would say we're, we're not, and we're not bleeding edge, but we're, we're in the first half of the team, maybe the first third. Yeah, it's, it, we're anxious to see, I think it will work out. The big difference is, in the past, we'd pretend that the kid didn't have a cellphone and we knew it was in their pocket. Now, the cellphone is right on the desk and so, okay, pick up your tass, blah, 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 and put it back. And I think it's a little bit more honest, I, I mean, this pretending that they didn't have it.
And the policy is pretty clear in terms of within the classroom during instructional time, it is used only for that purpose and if you use it to text your friends somewhere and you get caught doing that, then obviously, there's a penalty to pay. But the policy is pretty clear with that and so far, as John points out, that's not been a concern. There will be some who test it, obviously, but I think the strength probably outweighs the challenges.
There, we had one contact from a parent that was concerned about inappropriate photographs, cameras in bathrooms and locker rooms and stuff like that. That's been a question or an issue that we've been dealing with since the mid-eighties when the technology became smaller and cheaper. And we've been pretty effective with both students primarily and some staff occasionally. So I don't, I, you know, will we have problems with that? Yeah, I mean, people are going to do stupid things. But by and large, that has not been a problem. We have come down very hard, law enforcement's been a good teammate with that. The carriers, the like, you know, the Verizon, other companies, they don't want that kind of baloney on their, on their carrier. And so we've had, we've had pretty good success with that and I think we'll continue to do so. The, but this, this is, this is sticking our toe in the water and so far, it's going real well. And I mean, we have had reduced discipline as a result of it. And we, it's just, it's just one more thing that we're dealing with. I mean, we, our food services program, we're pushing more and more vegetables and healthy foods and stuff like that, try to buy local and stuff like that. And, you know, it's nifty to see a second grader go up and ask for a salad with some chunks of chicken on it. And if you'd have said ten years ago to me, the kids are going to be doing that, I'd say, I don't think so. I mean, chicken nuggets and Italian dunkers and pizza and burgers and stuff like that. And, and the market hasn't totally switched, but the kids are buying and eating healthier, healthier meals. The, it's just a lot of good things. Our advanced placement has been a big change, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, we were working hard to try and get kids to take advanced placement. We did a project, this, two years ago, we started, piloted at Mardella for ninth graders to take advanced placement, US, world, or no, world history. And, and we said, eh, ninth graders, that's kind of, kind of young. Well, they blew us out of the water. The first year, with a teacher that had never taught advanced placement, world history before, we beat the international scores for that, beat them. And the guy said, a couple of things I learned by going through this process in terms of writing and some other things, he said, can I bring in some, an English language arts teacher to work with my kids a little bit? The second year, that was last year, and we brought in a couple more schools to try it, we beat by a large margin the international scores. And the international scores are nine, a few ninth graders, mostly tenth, eleventh and a lot of twelfth graders. So our ninth graders are doing very, very well. And that's, and it's not just one school. And that's, and it's not just one school now. We've got three schools that are doing it. So we're seeing some extremely positive results, even though at the same time, we're increasing the number of kids that take advanced placement, which means, most of the time, advanced placement classes are strictly the kids at the very top of your academic performance level. We're taking more kids, which means we're driving down further into kids that maybe don't have quite the same level of typical academic performance. But we're still getting the participation, and we're increasing the number of kids that take the test, and we're increasing the scores that they get on these tests. So we're really proud, and that is an international gold standard. AP and International Baccalaureate are the two gold standards for international schools. I've interviewed dozens of folks that teach in various schools around the world, in the private sector as well as the public, and that's their standard, and our kids beat it. And I think, you know, we should be crowing from the top of the courthouse. It's hard to stand up at the top, I realize. But we've had some really good luck on that. We're also doing a few things monetarily. You, when you drive down thirteen, you can see the cellphone tower that's over at Bennett High School at James M. Bennett, and that's going well. We're looking for more opportunities like that. You know, it gives us a good downstroke financially as well as long-term funding, and it gives us better cellphone reception at that site. Plus, we can put our own gadgets up there according to the contract. So if we want a better backup system for fiber optic lines, we can put microwave equipment up there. So we've got a redundant system, so that one system goes down, we've still got a system to keep going. Because it is no, it's no longer a situation, you don't miss the computer when it's not there today. Today, it's a tool that we use every day. We're going to have a meeting on Saturday to talk about how to increase our utilization of tech books. These are book sets. And it's, the market has changed dramatically. If you think of these Nooks and, and iPads and stuff like that, well, today, tech books, they could be on your cellphone, they could be on your laptop, they could be on your tablet, they could be on a number of different places. And it can be on the web, which means you can access it from anywhere as with anything. And we're looking at that for the next step in that whole process with the Discovery Communications folks. I'll have their VP coming out here to talk about that a little bit, and we're going to have some conversations. Hopefully, we'll get another opportunity to expand our horizons in that area. We're also looking very much with a solar array with Lee Beecham with the county. So anything we can do to enhance that progress, we're delighted. Any chance we can get to reduce our, our electric rate from eight or nine cents a kilowatt hour to four, we're excited about that. And it also gives you a better base to negotiate the contract with SolarCity.
Do you guys know what savings that could potentially be for you? Have you done the calculation on that?
We have, but I don't have that information.
Okay.
I think we were looking at four preliminary sites in terms of our portfolio.
Mostly on the buildings?
Ground-based.
Ground-based, okay.
But four school sites.
Great.
Have you looked at the kind of savings you might have realized?
Yeah, yes, they've cranked some numbers, but again, I don't have that information.
And finally, you may notice-
Always take those numbers with a grain of salt because, you know, when you buy the new car, it says this is going to be your gas mileage. That's not always true, but the numbers they shared are impressive.
Well, I tell you what. It's like this, our numbers went from a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand plus today in a matter of five minutes. So maybe there's a good one.
That's not fair. That's right.
That's not fair, Jim.
That's not-
That was a candid comment.
And we, and just as a final comment, we had several bus contractors, contracts turned back this, this past year. And we marketed them to the other bus contractors, and these are bus routes that are low miles and low hours, which means low revenue stream. And, you know, in, maybe a few years back, when you can buy a bus for forty, fifty grand, that might be one thing. Well, today, a bus costs about a hundred grand. And that, all of a sudden, is a pretty big downstroke for, for a contract that's not going to generate as much money as maybe one of the better ones. So we now operate seven of our own buses, and so you've seen a sign up for us on Business Fifty saying, you want to be a bus driver, come out and work for us. They're running fine, pleased?
Yeah, I think you shared that with us last, at our last meeting.
And it's going well. So, thank you. Any other questions you might have for us?
Back to the AP, what, do you know what percentage of students now are in the AP program? Is there a?
Um, I don't.
Not right off. I, I have statistics-
Okay.
But I did not bring them with me. So you do not want to quote.
Okay. But it has increased.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
I want to know if you have any concerns or any problems that were unanticipated this year. Not that you want to share with us.
Every, it's, you know, we had a great opening this year. I mean, we had a mild summer, we had a great summer for doing the construction, the roofing and stuff like that. And the opening of the year really, really went very, very smoothly. You know, a couple, couple headaches here, you know, like the water situation at Beaver Run and that, but you're going to have something like that. Even if you're on, even if you're on city water, that's about the time one of the mains breaks. You just have to deal with it.
You're ahead of schedule on Bennett Middle?
Yes, we're on schedule.
It's been a great opening.
Sounds like it.
Cherie?
How'd you know I had a question? I just wanted to just get a little bit more clarification on what you were saying about Y Middle. Was that part of this number ten landback strategy, or that was something different?
Well, land banking is something different. We're looking at the possibilities, and I don't know what year in the future, I, you know, it's penciled in there, and I can't remember the, that specific number. But basically, looking at it as a swing school, if we can use, if we can move all the kids out of a site and, and just simply take over the building, we can go through a building substantially faster and for lower cost. And when I say lower cost, it may not be like a million dollars less, but if I can even save two hundred thousand bucks and come out with the same or better product, it's worth our while to, to be able to do those kinds of renovations and use things differently. And again, that allows us to reduce a unit. You know, we're, in regards to Y Middle, we're still working with the State Department of Planning, I think it is, as well as the Sheriff's Office, the Salisbury Police, and our faith community. We just recently opened, we didn't open it up, Goose Creek is opening up a gas station at, is it Truitt and Business Fifty? And so we're expecting that we're going to have more pedestrians in that area. And so we're trying to get ourselves another crossing guard. By the way, if you know anybody that wants to be a crossing guard, it's, it's, it's good work, and it's, and the pay is reasonable, and you get to meet a lot of nice kids and all that sort of stuff. But we're concerned about somebody getting hurt at that site. So we're working on a number of fronts to, literally, there might be some kind of a fence or something to try and reduce the walking across, as well as trying to talk with the neighbors and say, listen, please work with your kids to cross when we have a crossing guard, where we have markers and signs and lights and sample fours and stuff like that. But we have to do something with that. But the Y Middle site, when we look at that, the, the numbers are, are smaller at that site, and we have, it costs us money to put the portables over at Pittsville so that we can shuffle out a third of the kids. If we could have shuffled out all the kids, the whole project would have been done. As it is, we're still, about a third of the classrooms are going to be finished sometime between now and Thanksgiving or Christmas. And, and you can save real dollars. The contractors, when they, when they come in, they like to roll in, get their whole crew, tear it apart, do it and be done with it. And when you can't do that, it's going to cost you money.
Okay, so you consider Y Middle to be a site to serve in that role to-
That's, that's currently in the current planning, yeah. What will, no, that's going to be a few years out. How that'll all shake out is another story. We'll see.
Sounds good. And then one last question with regards to Mardella Middle and High. I know they have a couple of portal, portables there, too. Is that, you looking to expand that school to not have those on the property, or no?
There is future plans for an addition at Mardella as well. Yes. The task force looked at the overall inventory and the overall conditions of our portfolio to make those, you know, recommendations. When you look at the entire report, the task force overall, I think you begin to see how it comes together as a whole and tries to address our overall systemic problems, where we need growth, where we need to consolidate our portfolio, the resources that we have, and where we need to put the resources that we manage. There was a lot of work and thought put into it, a lot of great discussions, but I think it would be, I could answer all the specific questions that you have, but I think it would do a disservice in not understanding the overall concepts behind the entire work.
Cherie, or Rest of Council, would it be beneficial to invite, you know, Brian or whoever in at one of our council meetings to go over the facilities?
The whole facilities plan.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it would be beneficial, I mean, you know.
Okay. I mean, we can have a work session, it doesn't have to be during legislative part, but it'd be nice to have it on air, too.
Sure, I think our citizenry would appreciate that because, you know, the schools are a large part of our budget, so it's just knowledge.
We'll, we'll organize that and ask for you guys to come in.
We'd be delighted.
Yeah.
Because there's, you know, there's the schools, there's the support facilities, like our annexes, one of our annexes is, I mean, it was given to us by Purdue fifteen years ago, something like that. Eighty, in eighty-four, so.
Twenty, yeah.
It's, it's been a while.
Thirty years, yeah.
And they were, and they were ten years old when we got them. And they, they've, they've gone way past their useful life, and so we have to do something to, to deal with that. But we'd be delighted to have really in-depth opportunity, and we'll bring copies of the full report for you.
That'd be great.
I just tell you that that is a real concern and priority for the board, that the annexes have now reached a point of not being real safe in some areas because of the condition of the flooring. And certainly, whenever it rains, there are buckets everywhere, and we want to make sure the air quality is safe in it. So-
Did you have a mold issue?
Those are real issues for us.
Had a mold issue in one of the annexes, I thought.
I think, a while back, where we had a, we had a roof leak.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, are the floors scheduled for maintenance?
Well, they, Brian's crew keeps working on them, but they've almost reached the point, Stevie, where, you know, you work and do only so much, and it's gotten so old that it's almost to the point of being beyond repair at this point, or the money they're spending is, you know, good money going to bad. So that's for us, that we've got a lot of folks working over there, and that's, we talked about it at our meeting this morning again, and it's got to be a real priority. We just can't continue to go on as we've gone there for fear something will happen.
Maintenance would be like new flooring, like tile or carpeting or something like that, at least as, as I would say.
I just heard Ron say, you know, the floors were bad, so that's why they're maintenance.
Yes, this is, this is more like housing construction, and the, the population goes, so it'd really have, be a situation, we're going to do something, is to cover it with three-quarter inch plywood or some type of a flooring product, and then resurface over that, which would make it more, I don't know, I wouldn't call it maintenance, I'd call it something else.
I'd call it rebuilding.
Good question, thank you.
Maybe five, start again.
I think it's, I think that's where we're at.
That's where we are.
Any other question you might have for us, please? At, at any time, if somebody wants to have, have lunch, I mean, I had lunch with some seventh graders yesterday. It's amazing the stuff that you can learn.
Keep saying that.
Some things you need more to learn.
You say, come have lunch, and I keep saying, I don't like that.
All right, good. Thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you all so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben. Close work, it'd be great.
Ron? Yes.[1715.26]